I'd like to call the meeting to order. All board members are present. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I'll look for where you stand.
I want to start by approving the agenda. However, we want to rearrange a couple of the things. We'd like to start, we're going to start with our action items after the consent agenda. And we're going to start with item number nine and move nine through 12 and then do item three and then go back to the beginning. And that's because we have a board member who needs to leave early to attend a concert.
I'll make a motion to approve that agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Don, any comments on? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. So we're going to start with item 10.9, non-renewal of teaching contracts.
We have, we have four non-renewals this evening and all of them are under the same auspices as far as the letters that will be sent to the non-renewed teachers. And then also a letter will be given to them saying about their non-renewal and what action they have or what recourse they have. At this time, I'll consider a motion to look at the non-renewal of the teacher contracts.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to consider the resolution for terminating a non-renewal of teaching contract for Lisa Beckel, a probationary teacher. How do you vote on that, Jerry?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Kitten?
Yes.
Kim?
Abstain.
Jean?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Item passes. Next, we have the non-renewal of Mr. Lacy for termination and non-renewal. How do you vote on this, Sherry?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Kitten?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Item passes. Jean?
Jill.
Where are the other two? Okay. All right, the next one that's going to add is for the non-renewal of Emily Desson, a probationary teacher. How do you vote on that, Jerry?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Kitten?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Dennis, yes, item passes. And finally, we have the non-renewal of Haley Appelin. How do you vote on that non-renewal, Jerry?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Kitten?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Dennis, yes, item passes.
Next, we have a resolution to accept a donation of a tractor from Mike and Cheryl Skozaczek.
Excuse me, I've got these, uh... Out of order here.
I make a motion that we accept the donation.
I think we have to read the resolution first, Don.
We have to read the resolution.
Hang on.
First of all, I will accept a motion to consider the resolution for the donation of the tractor.
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider the resolution from the Skozaczeks for the tractor that is valued at, what was the value of that?
Eleven hundred dollars, I believe.
You have the...
Over a thousand.
Over, okay. Over a thousand dollars.
Do we have a need for this, Mr. Depper?
Yes.
I don't have, I don't have that.
Not that much difference, but...
It's on there.
Can we turn these down? I mean, after a while, we'll have a giant supply of different cars and vehicles.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
I know, I just...
We don't, yeah, we don't accept every donation.
I assume the, whoever would be using it would let Tim or whoever know if they didn't have a need for another car to work on or something like that.
Turning it down?
And then there's always a surplus auction.
I guess if they're willing to donate it, I look at it as something that, you know, the school district can either use or if they feel that they can't use it, they can, you know, sell it, I suppose.
I'm not questioning that, I'm just wondering.
What's that?
I'm not questioning that, I'm just wondering if we've ever turned anything down.
Well, I'm assuming...
Probably gets turned down before it makes it to board.
Right, I'm assuming the principals would take care of that if they don't need it.
There's been some music things in the past, so...
And this comes from Mike and Cheryl Skozaczek. And the value is over a thousand dollars and it's a Model 800 Ford tractor. Okay? So we have a motion to consider this...
And I second it.
...resolution, it's been seconded. How do you vote on it, Don?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Kitten?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Dennis? Yes, item passes. Next, we have a resolution to accept the gift from Tom and Deb, Deb Lindblum. And it is for a 2,000 Pontiac Bonneville and it's valued at $1,493. And again, since it's over a thousand dollars, I needed to have a motion to consider this resolution.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider the resolution of accepting the gift of the car from Tom and Deb Lindblum. How do you vote on this, Don?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Kitten?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Dennis? Yes, item passes. And finally, we have a resolution to accept the gift from Adam Sylvia and it is for a 1999 Dodge Neon valued at $1,324. Do I have a motion to consider this resolution?
Don't move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider the resolution of accepting the gift from Adam Silvula. How do you vote on this, Don?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Kitten?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Dennis? Yes, item passes. And I'd like to just, you know, from the board's standpoint, you know, acknowledge the fact that these are, I'm sure, very worthwhile things that, like Jerry said, have cleared the proper channels and have come to us at this time, so...
It's, yeah, and obviously, it's for our auto class. The cars are, which we've had a very strong program with Kevin Baer as our teacher there. And the other one was recommended from Craig Most. But, yeah, to answer, Don, Don has a good question. There's, there's been times that we've turned people down for donations where we just don't have the space. For example, there's been piano and an organ at times where we just check with our teachers and as much as we'd like to have it, we just, it won't serve our purpose or we just don't have room for it, so...
You can only use...
I just haven't told you about some of these things. That's the only reason, Don, you probably wouldn't know is...
You can only use so many pianos or, you know, organs or whatever.
Or it could be in other areas too. Like, off the top of my head, that's what comes out right away.
Next, we're going to consider a resolution for the long-term facilities maintenance revenue for the Southwest Metro Co-op.
We have one more resolution. This concerns funding for, um, maintenance and building of a structure at the Southwest Metro Co-op. And I'll read the resolution to you. A resolution approving Southwest Metro Intermediate School District Number 288 Long-Term Facility Maintenance Program Budget and authorizing the inclusion of a proportionate share of those projects in the district's application for long-term facility maintenance revenue. And the reason we're doing it in this manner is that all districts then can include it in their long-term facility maintenance revenue rather than having it come out of the general fund. So this is the proper procedure and by having all of the member districts go along with this resolution, then it goes through the proper funding and through the proper channel. Are there any questions?
Looks like it has a pretty good breakdown of numbers online.
Right.
For us to look at.
Right.
Excuse me, I just want to point out that this, the new preggs portion will show up on our levy. So these are levy dollars, just like lease levy. We lease levy for lease costs for Southwest Metro Co-op, so this will show up on our levy. It doesn't take away from our long-term facilities maintenance, but this is an additional levy to our taxpayers.
And again, it doesn't come from the general fund, it comes from this specific levy for maintenance.
Right, right. So we levy for it and then they invoice us and then they can use that for that, for those purposes.
Is that dollar amount fixed as to what it reports in there or is it based on actual?
It is going to be based on actual and they also have Buffalo who hasn't quite joined yet, so it's still fluctuating, but Tom assured me on Friday that they're very close. The numbers are very close.
At this time, I'll accept the motion to consider this resolution.
Second.
A motion.
Awesome.
I'll make a motion, sorry.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded to consider the resolution approving the Metro Intermediate District 288's Long-Term Facility Maintenance Program Budget. How do you vote on this, Jerry?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Kitten?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Yeah, Dennis? Yes, item passes.
Thank you, Dennis. Now, we're going to finish our action items, starting with the first one on here, and then we'll go back to the committee reports after we're done with the action items. The first item is the easement for the city sanitary sewer line and other utilities, which there's some nice diagrams online on where they all are.
Yes, this is cleaning up some paperwork. I think that, you know, the city has, has sanitary sewer lines and such running through our properties and just don't have any formal documentation, so just need to approve this easement and then it'll be in the record books.
I'm sure when it was originally done, it was just kind of a verbal agreement with the city and school and now they just want it on paper, I guess, on file for everybody, so it's pretty simple.
And we've done this before for them. We've done this, we did this a couple of years ago for something as well, yeah.
I'll make the motion to approve the easement for citizen, city sanitary sewer line and other utilities.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Next, Sandy has a preliminary budget for fiscal year 1617.
Yes, thank you. So this is basically just the general fund. I typically just focus on the general fund for the first, first budget presentation. And the overall numbers are very much in line with what I presented to the five, for the five-year financial projections back in March. So these numbers will look, hopefully, very familiar. First of all, for 1516, I just listed there where we stand in our general fund for our total unassigned fund balance. Right now, we're at 24.8% of our, for unassigned fund balance. The revised budget would have put us at about 21.3 and I'm thinking we're going to end up somewhere around 24. The original budget had us losing about a million dollars or so in our unassigned fund balance and we are coming in, our expenses are coming in under budget. I expect our revenue to be pretty, pretty much on, so we'll end up the year a little bit better than what I projected, which is always the plan for that to happen. So that's where I think we're going to end up. The wildcard here is always special ed revenue. Even though the revenue calculations are more predictable, the thing that's not predictable is tuition for our special ed students, so that is always hard to, hard to predict, but I think it should come in pretty close to what I budgeted for. Our revenue assumptions for next year, we are assuming 269 kindergarten students per the enrollment projections. We are currently at 273, so that's real positive and we still have a couple more we're trying to chase down and see if they're going to come to our district or not. But overall, I'm predicting flat enrollment and that's what our enrollment projections would show for next year. I'm assuming the 2% on the formula, that's what the legislature had approved last year. There's no new money on the formula approved this year in the legislative session that just concluded today. And I'm assuming 2% on special ed aid and other revenue fairly flat. The staffing changes. The elementary, initially, we had indicated that we would go down five FTE, but because of the higher kindergarten numbers than normal, we went ahead and added one more to kindergarten at Eagle, Eagle View. So we're going down four FTE at the elementary level. A no change at the middle school, high school, up 1.5 FTE, you'll be approving that tonight. ALC up .25 FTE and then that .5 chemical health specialist that will be half-funded by Scott Family Net. Still planning for district contingency, I have $75,000 in for turf replacement, $75,000 for future severance payments. That has been 125 and I'll be asking you to approve 125 in June for this year, but because of our, all of our teachers need to retire by the end of next year, I'm going to lower those future commitments because most of our severance payments will be, will be done. Continue our Power for Learning Initiative rollout. Our full implementation's going to be about $490,000 a year. One thing that, that we didn't maybe anticipate, besides the lease payments, we're having a rather high failure rate for some of the, the high school Chromebooks and we didn't get an extended warranty or anything. We are collecting money when it's damaged, you know, we're, we're getting revenue for that, but we did spend a little bit more than we thought this year on replacement parts for the Chromebooks. And so I, I included that same, the same amount for next year. When we do the second round of Chromebook leases for the high school, we'll probably look at some sort of extended warranty. We'll look to see if that, if that might be a better deal for us. We're also, for our elementary school, we're doing Chromebooks for three, four, grades three, four, and five and iPad class sets for preschool K12, K12. And so we'll be doing three-year leases, we're just in the middle of doing those right now. And then we reduce curriculum budget by another 25%, so that will let, steady off now, become stable going forward. We also have three special ed vans, we'll be using either federal funds or medical assistant revenue funds for those. Then the capital plan, we have special projects of $211,000. Technology is about 140,000 of that and that's for, we're going to be putting in our own fiber in the district. And we also had to buy charging stations for the elementary DLE implementation. So, you know, the middle school and high school students take their Chromebooks home and charge them at home, but we're going to have to have charging stations for our class sets at the elementary. And then we have $71,000 for buildings and grounds and athletics. And then our annual allocations are $476,000 and most of that is non-technology and we have one bus. Last year, we didn't buy any buses, this year, we're holding it to one bus, so that's good news. Then our long-term facilities maintenance revenue, this is the first year of, of this revenue, so we levied for it in 2016, so it'll be revenue for next year. And that replaces the health and safety and deferred maintenance revenue. And we were able to move some of our annual operating capital allocations and, and capital projects to the long-term facilities maintenance, which will help our, our operating capital budget. So things like our, you know, our carpet replacement, our paint cycle, ceiling tiles, things like that, we used to really take out of our operating capital, but now we can move that to long-term facilities maintenance. We have a big project we weren't really expecting, but it's necessary to do window caulking at Raven Stream and Eagle View. That's about almost $100,000, we need to do that, but again, we'll use this new revenue for that. We have the ECFE building roof replacement, that'll be done sometime this summer, I believe. And then we also have athletic facility bleacher replacement and high school tennis court resurfing, resurfacing. You did, you know, you did approve all these, all of these projects last year when you approved the 10-year plan in July for our levy for this year. Now you'll have to have a new 10-year plan approved by July 31st of this year and Craig and I are working on that right now and we're still waiting for some stuff from MDE to be able to start working on that. So the next steps, June 27th will be the preliminary budget approval and that will include all funds. We have our audit results in September and then in December, we'll do the final budget and we'll have updated five-year projection, that's either usually in December or January. This year, we actually waited a little bit because of the kindergarten enrollment. So how does it look? For the total fund, we have revenues of about 39 million and total expenditures about 45 and a half million. We had planned, you know, we have a really relatively high fund balance right now, we'd planned that we were going to lose some fund balance this year and I show the same for the unassigned. Our general fund balance history, you'll see, I added the final 2014-15, the projected 1516 and then we show the preliminary 1617 for both the total and the unassigned. Excuse me. Our committed and reserved funds, you'll see staff development, we ended the year with, or I think we'll end the year this year with about 25,000 in reserve for staff development, we'll spend that down a little bit next year. Deferred maintenance and long-term facility maintenance revenue, we should end up with a small fund balance. I should comment that the long-term facility maintenance revenue, you don't have to spend it all every year, you can save it up for, for future projects, so you don't, you're not required to spend it, you just have to reserve the money. Health and safety, we're finishing that out because that is going away. We'll end the year, next year, with a negative fund balance. Any negative at the end of next year, in June of 2017, we have to do a transfer from our general fund to cover any of that, any of that negative. Operating capital will stay about the same, hopefully. Gifted and talented, we're still growing that, I have been working with Marin on how to use that money. Safe schools, we're back to kind of building that up a little bit again after we had the big capital purchases a couple of years ago. And then severance, you'll see, we'll end this year with a pretty big amount and then we'll go down, we'll be paying out all that teacher severance at, at the end of next year.
And that, like you said, that's the end of the, the larger severances?
Yes.
Would be in next year's budget?
Yes. And then the other funds I'll be presenting in June, I hope to have it actually for the work session in June. Just didn't get all the, all the information, so those funds are usually pretty, I mean, funds six and seven are pretty straightforward and, and I'm working on funds two and four right now.
I have a question on the deferred maintenance. You know, when we approve the plan for what we're doing, you said you don't have to spend it all. Do you have to use it only for what you specified when we approve it or the next year, can you use it for other things on next year's list?
Yeah, they don't track it by finance code, so like, you know, roofs or building envelope, things like that, you don't have to, you just basically have to track your expenditures in-house, so you have flexibility to move between, between projects.
You don't use it all on a roof one year, you can use it for carpet the next year?
Yes. And I will note too, that with our building projects and the demolition of our, our pretty old building, our long-term facilities maintenance revenue will be less than what we had, what I had projected a year ago before we had the building plans. So, because it goes by building, average building age, so it won't be quite as much as what we anticipated, just because we'll have newer facilities, which is good because then you won't need as much money.
Yeah.
Right, exactly. So any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, good, thank you.
Next, the high school staffing update.
Do we need to, that's not an action item then, I assume, or is it?
Don't, don't have to approve it tonight, nope. So the high school staffing last, last work session, we presented that we will be going up 1.5 FTE, we add a little bit more for the world languages for Spanish and German and so it's part of the budget, we just ask that you approve those tonight.
And this one, we do need to approve.
Yes, I see that. Sorry. I'll make a motion to approve the high, high school staffing up.
A second. I think this was kind of explained at our work session?
Yeah, yes.
That the enrollment in the world languages was higher?
Yes.
Than expected and we're trying to stay in line with class sizes throughout the metro area? Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes six zero now. Next, we have the high school and ALC student handbook.
I don't know if you have any questions, I mean, Lonnie presented this at the, at the work session. Not a lot of changes.
No, it looked like they made the changes that were necessary, they felt necessary, so...
Yeah, and probably the biggest one is with the credits for participating in co-curricular activities, one that we've had kids that probably were not making satisfactory progress, were able to keep playing and, and then not graduate, but it's a few minor, I mean, it wasn't, still an issue, but it wasn't a lot of people, but...
Two pages of changes that are online and...
Yep.
Highlighted.
None of them are, that's probably the only significant one.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the high school and the ALC student handbook.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Next, we have the middle school handbook.
Again, few changes, I don't know if anyone has any questions.
There's nothing major in it, I didn't think, so...
It's the only, the only thing, yeah, it was a date, so...
Motion that we approve the middle school handbook changes.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Next, we have the parents' survey results.
Yes, I want to take a moment here at, we do this district annual survey. It's mailed to all of our parents in our district in 721, grades kindergarten through seniors. We had 1,089 parents participate in the survey and that's been very consistent for three years now. We've been just over 1,100 the first two years and, and right now, 1,089, so I think it's probably within 30 parents on all three years. What they do on this survey, this online survey is that parents rate their satisfaction, strongly agree, disagree, or strongly disagree with the statements that are made in the survey, which I'll show you. There's 32 statements in the survey and I'd like to note too, on 30 of the 32, there's been an 85% or more or higher that parents strongly agree or agree with their satisfaction in that area. So the results are very good and I'll go over a few examples, but before I go there, the areas that are included in the statements, there are statements on student safety, nutrition, transportation, community education, communication by the superintendent, school climate, school communication, the quality of education, technology, their child's academic progress, buildings and grounds, co-curricular activities, and post-secondary guidance. So this has been the same statements or questions three years in a row now. I'll go through the, the ones that rated the highest, where 95% or more of the parents strongly agree or agree with the satisfaction in that area. The top one being the environment at My Child's School supports learning, you can see that's at 98, along with My Child's School is clean and well-maintained. My child feels safe at school, had 97% agreeable rate. And the education offered to students at our school is of a high quality. Teachers use technology to engage students in learning, that was 97% and, and that one's gone up a little bit over the years and I think that's, that's great that you can see that our teachers and our staff members are applying what they learn and enhancing student learning that way. At 96%, you can see the, the steps the school district has taken to keep my child safe and we know how important safety is. Overall satisfaction with My Child's School. And high-quality fine arts program, music, art, and theater had 96% and that's something we're very proud of and I think people are very supportive in this community, in our communities here. Teachers care about my child's success is 96. If I have a concern, I can contact someone at the school, is 96. Community education offers innovative, engaging activities and programs and services for me and my child was at 95. My child's teacher is approachable and accessible. My child's principal is approachable and accessible, so both teacher and principal are at 95%. accessible, so both teacher and principal are at 95 percent. Contributions and accomplishments of students are celebrated at 95, and finally, the last one, school office provides a helpful and welcoming environment. You know, we talk about test scores and all that. Wise mentor, former superintendent once told me, what's, what gets measured gets done, and these are measurements for us, these annual surveys, just like the tests our kids take too, but what gets measured gets done, and he always says, measure what matters. And these things, whether it's safety, child's safety, child's academic progress, having a well, helpful and welcoming environment, community edu, all these things are very important, and I think that's why it's vital that we keep assessing our, our parents on this. Some significant improvements, I want to make this note, providing healthy meal choices. As you can see, back in 2014, we had a 74 percent agreeable rate, went up to 77, this one, up to 82, and Kim Pran is doing a wonderful job. It's quite the challenge, which the, you know, what we have to meet the federal guidelines, the federal law, I should say, and she's continuing to looking at new way of doing things, so I think that's only going to keep, keep going up with her hard work. School-to-home communication, keeping parents informed, has gone from 84 to 91 percent, so a 7 percent increase over the course of the three years. And along with my child's teacher shares timely information with me and, about my child's learning, has gone from 82 to 89, so that's gone up 7 percent. And, you know, we can look at this data and wonder why, but I think, obviously, I think technology has played a role in improving communication with parents, and I think that's proof of that, the more we use technology. So there's good and bad, you know, sometimes, obviously, we know technology can be used in inappropriate ways, but I think especially for us in communication, it's helped us. You can also, teachers caring about their child's success has gone up four percentage points over the course of the last couple of years. And guidance for post-secondary education made a big jump this past year by 9 percent. So that was good, and obviously, like I've said before, we've added a middle school counselor to our staff and a high school counselor now, that's, so we've added the social, emotional support to our schools, and we've reduced, we haven't added staffing, well, we've reduced to academic support positions to be able to do that. And I think as we obviously teach the whole child that it's been an important part of addressing some of those things. Declining satisfactory rating, I had to put this on the superintendent, may establish and maintain effective channels of communication to support mission, went down two percentage points. And I will put, say this, that the, these are the two areas, the only two areas that went down in the entire survey, but I guess it's the same as 2014, so it's not that bad. And then, my child feels comfortable speaking to the school staff about concerns, you know, it's gone up and then went back down, so just thought I'd be very transparent, show those things there. Here's what I thought was neat, I went back to the 14, survey 15, and 16, and agreed, or strongly agreed on those statements, the mean average in 14 was 90.38, went up about 1.3 percent last year, and we increased that again by almost a whole percentage point. So that's pretty neat to see, that it's, it's evidence of continuous improvement in those different areas and those different domains of our school districts, so something I think I'll probably share on Friday with our staff too, get that feedback, very positive feedback with our districts, so, you know, almost 93 percent of our parents agreeing or strongly agreeing with many of, with the statements that are part of that survey. So that's that, does anyone have any questions, comments?
I, I like the fact that we have the parents do these surveys, because they can provide their input, it's very easy to do, and if they have any additional comments, they're very easy to type in, provides us good information.
Do you know if a lot of school districts do the same type of thing, or?
Well, we, we started doing this before it became part of the mandate, but you're, with the whole, I'm forgetting the title of the, World's Best Workforce, last year that was passed, you're supposed to be doing that, but we, we were doing that before, I mean, before that was mandated, let's say, but I don't know, you know, you create your own surveys, so I'm not sure what other districts do, but it's good feedback, and, and there's, obviously, we can always get better, and there's some areas we need to improve a little bit more, but I think all in all, it's, it's been good for us to do.
Any further comments? Thank you. Last thing we have to take action on is the approving the Education Foundation grants. We have three grants that they're bringing to us, totaling $3,300 total. Falcon Ridge has some long, or a Lego program to do story starters to help students with their writing skills. Middle School is getting a program to teach students about infectious disease, and using that information to research a fictional outbreak and performing laboratory tests to identify the biological agent, which sounds like a video game that they get to play, but they'll actually learn something from it. And then the ALC is going to get material to create a permanent orienteering course to use at the Day Nature Center in Henderson. If we can have a motion to approve these?
I'll make a motion to approve the foundation grants.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 6-0. Now we're going to go back in our agenda and go to our board committee reports, policy committee.
Basically, we just had a few of them that we just changed the wording on, the policy 520 with the student surveys, and policy 521 with student disability nondiscrimination, and then Sean took care of the internet acceptable use policy.
Denny's not here, so we won't have any updates on the next two. Community Ed. No meetings?
Yeah, no, Community Ed. Oh, Community Ed, yes, sorry about that. We had our meeting on May 5th, basically reviewed the things that have been going on so far this year, and the big question was, how can we get the information out better? And if anybody's got any ideas, they should let us know. And actually, it's kind of a consensus, KCheck has been our number one outlet for results. When people come to an event or something, they mention that they heard it on KCheck. We're going to meet again in July sometimes. The second thing I want to mention is, we had the report for the Historical Society at our last meeting, and I did go to a couple sessions, and what they did is they brought in about 22, 23, 24 students at a time on the bus, and half of them stayed in the bus, and the half of them went in the cabin, because the cabin's a little small. And I was very impressed with the presenters and the kids, they asked a lot of meaningful questions, so the Historical Society should get a good pat on the back for, for doing well. And then the other thing, the schools have been having grandparents today, and I went to a couple of them, and kudos to the whole program, they're very, very good, and I enjoyed it very much, and it's very good publicity for older voters.
I was just going to mention, Community Ed has a new website now, a new design, I should say. I don't, okay. I'll make mention of the, their new website.
Thank you. Wellness committee.
Yes, I did not attend the meeting that they had last month, I had a prior commitment, and I did get in touch with Kim, just to ask her if there's anything that she would like for input-wise, for people that did not attend, and she did say that the meeting was very well-attended, and the piece of business that they did follow up on is they want to do an event in the fall with the New Prague Area Education Foundation, and it's looking like it would be a run that they're going to do, they're still in the planning phases of it. Second, they were looking for opinions on the wellness initiatives they want to implement, and just some examples could be fitness classes, having quiet spaces for staff, fresh fruit in the lounges, lounges at the buildings, getting outdoor eating areas for staff, and I thought that was a good one. And so they're also looking into, the third point is, an idea of getting some sit-to-stand workstations for the clerical, so I believe they're working with Craig Most on that, on getting that equipment, and just seeing what they can do to implement that. And I was going to add, that was the first meeting, I wasn't there, but that they had the new director of health services attend, so it was, it was very well-attended, I heard.
Thank you. Early childhood.
Yes, we had our last meeting for the school year, and the four subcommittees presented their applications for funding, the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation has $5,000 in grant funds available to us, and the four groups presented their plans, and after, after presentation, it was decided that, that the $5,000 will be able to fund all of them. And one of them is to provide book bags in the low-income housing areas, and they're also going to have little libraries around town in various businesses. And then we're going to create a resource guide for families, and that's going to, we're going to try and figure out how to get it into the hands of families as soon as they have a baby, that, that will be coming to our school district. And then the, another project is to have Saturday gym days for families in the winter ti, in the winter months. And the final project will be training for local childcare providers, and also to develop a support group for them. And this money will be available, was supposed to have been available the May 15th, so those projects should be.
They're going to start on it over the summer, probably, or?
Well, I know our, my, the committee I'm on is still going to be meeting, so whether or not everything is done over summer or not until fall, but soon.
They have an end goal for having some of those things up and going, like the book, little libraries and things like that?
I don't, I don't know if the committee, you know, I suppose if the committees continue to meet, then they can get these things up and running. Of course, the winter gym won't be the.
You don't need that in the summer. They have a large outdoor gym to use.
Right.
Thank you. Final item on our meeting tonight, we'll have the superintendent update and good news.
Okay, first, I want to start with the good news, let you know, our Wright County Conference champions, our softball team tied for the conference championship, and they're the number one seed in section play, in fact, they begin playoffs tomorrow at home at 5:00. So that was neat. Girls golf also won the Wright County Championship, and they got a, you know, a chance to advance to the state possibly, you never know, they'll, they've got a squad that's really improving quite a bit, and obviously, led by Taylor Ledwine, the returning state champion. And then boys track and field, won the Wright County Championship last Tuesday, in dominating fashion, they, yeah, they had a great meet, and they also, the true team meet, the week before, they finished third, and Lakeville North, Lakeville South had, finished ahead of them, and basically, the rest of the big nine was below them. So they've had a great season, so of the seven sport activities, we finished conference championships in three of them. Like I said, we hosted the conference track meet last Tuesday, I know a lot of work was involved in there, and want to thank Lynn Swagert and Brad Skogarow for getting that organized, it was a great meet, we had nice weather. The girls' track team did finish second, and really competed well. Then just some other updates, just let you know, seniors, last day of school is tomorrow on Tuesday, the last day for everyone will be on Thursday, and we've got our district celebration this Friday, obviously, the entire school board, we'd love to have you all there and, and have you be introduced, it, Tony Boothy and Julie Schmitz have quite the celebration plan, so it'll be, it'll be a fun time and, and a good way to also recognize our retirees. And obviously, graduation Friday, looks right now, it's 80 and 70 sunny on Friday night, maybe. No, we'll cross our fingers, but we'll hopefully, the weather forecasters are wrong again, so it'll be outdoors, weather permitting, I have to make the decision by 10:00 a.m. on Saturday, and.
Friday.
What did I say, Saturday? Friday, sorry. It was Saturday at one time. So, yeah, Friday, I'll make that decision, and it's always good to make the decision before graduation rather than after.
And it's in the gym if it's not.
It's in the gymnasium if not, and we'll have information going out on our website, and also, we will text and email our senior parents too, through our portal system too. So that's pretty much it. It's going to be a crazy week.
Yeah. But over quick. Yes. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 6-0. Now we're going to go back in our agenda and go to our board committee reports, policy